Welcome to the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for Monday, January 27, 2014. And the first order of business, as always, is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is review and approval of the minutes of December 9, 2013.
I just reread them, and I don't have any additions to make to them.
I have known.
I'll make a motion we accept as transmitted.
I'll second it.
Any further?
You can appoint me as a member for it.
Oh, that's right.
I'll second it.
For the purpose of tonight's meeting, in the absence of the vice chair, Wayne Rosa, I'm going to appoint Richie Shelton to sit as a member of the ZBA this evening. Okay?
Yeah.
And with that in mind, I'm going to consider Richie's second of the review and approval of the minutes of December 9 ratified. And is there further discussion of the minutes? For the discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The review and approval of the minutes of December 16, 2013. Any comments on the minutes?
No comments.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the 16th.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next order of business is the application of Jeremy Escalante and Hubert Buchanan to public hearing for an appeal from an administrative decision, reference section 1.11 of the New Market zoning ordinance. The property is located at 178 Main Street, tax map U3, lot 152, in the M2 zone. The zoning administrator determined the proposed use of a furniture-making business, which would be located on the first floor of the building, falls under manufacturing as defined in section 1.11 of the zoning ordinance, which is not a permitted use in the M2 zone. The applicant feels the proposed use of the space falls under the definition of light manufacturing, which is a permitted use in the M2 zone. Mr. Gallant, Mr. Buchanan? Before you start, Mr. Gallant, there's a couple of housekeeping things we've got to take care of.
From?
First of all, are you related to Jeff Gallant of Exeter Monument Works?
Yes.
How are you related to him?
He's my father's cousin.
Okay.
Yep.
You're Jeff Gallant?
He's Jim Gallant.
Jim, Jim.
So, my dad and Jeff's uncle are brothers.
Okay. I raise this because I'm an attorney, and Jeff Gallant has filed a lawsuit against one of my clients.
Oh, geez.
And I'm actually going to meet him tomorrow.
Uh-huh. Oh, my gosh.
Because we're going to try to resolve this thing.
Yeah.
I raise this because I want you to feel like you're being treated fairly.
Okay.
I think I can be fair and review your application on the merits, but if you're not comfortable with me, and you feel like maybe I'd be retaliating in some way or anything like that.
Conflict of interest, yep.
I'll happily step down, leave the room, and these four folks will take you home from there, if you want to take a minute and talk about it with your folks.
Can we also mention that if we don't have a full board then, so that...
Right.
You need to have three votes to carry the motion.
Well, let me, yeah, let me carry on.
Okay.
If you decide to have me step down, then you have the option of proceeding with these four folks, or waiting until we have five people here to hear your application.
Okay.
I leave it completely up to you.
Okay. I feel comfortable with it. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I feel fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hearing that, the next thing we want to, we need to deal with as a housekeeping matter is the application wasn't, the appeal wasn't filed within 21 days of the decision. The recommendation has been made by the administrator that we waive the timeliness requirement because the applicant was working diligently with the town officials to present us with this appeal this evening. So, the first thing I'd like to do is, if everyone is agreeable, is I will entertain a motion to waive the 21-day filing requirement and make a determination that the application has been filed timely.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion of that issue? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And with those housekeeping matters out of the way, Mr. Gallant, please.
Well, as you've read into my proposal, I plan on putting a fine furniture shop in the first floor of Hubert's building. I think that it clearly falls under the light manufacturing. Everything that I'm going to be doing there is really, I make small, custom, fine pieces of furniture that don't require any, you know, enormous, large operations of machinery. And I really feel like, you know, everything that I'm going to do there falls under the light manufacturing. And I, I don't, yeah, I think, I haven't really prepared a speech for it. I just, I feel like, you know, a large, you know, cabinet-making business that is, you know, cranking out kitchens, that's, that's one thing. But what I do is very hands-on, and I do mostly, you know, traditional pieces of furniture that don't require a whole lot of, of large machinery. The machinery that I'm going to have, I understand that noise is a, is a concern for abutters and community members, but I really feel like I'll be able to mitigate all of those annoyances within the shop. As you can see in my proposal, I've put soundproofing for the room that the machines are going to be in. I, I'm fitting, the loudest machines in the shop are the milling machines, and we're fitting those with helical heads. I can explain if you want, but they basically, they can cut the decibels up to 50 percent as long, you know, as well as the dust collection system being completely enclosed in the back. Those are the, you know, biggest pieces that I would feel make, make the most noise. And I feel like I've done an adequate job trying to show you how I'm going to keep those within the confines of the shop. I think from the town's perspective, I feel like, you know, this town, my mother just spoke at the mill space last night talking about, there was speakers there that talked a lot about, you know, industry in this town, how it was built on the cotton mill and the silk mill, and I really feel like bringing an educational, interesting, you know, business to the town would be, would be promoted and, you know, wanted. So, I guess that's all I have to say about that this time.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yep.
About the finishing operation.
Yep.
You, you, you mentioned it, but it was a little bit vague to me. What are you, what are you using in terms of finishes?
I don't do any spray finishes. I do mostly hand-applied finishes using, you know, alcohol-based shellacs, using traditional techniques.
Mm-hmm.
And all of those are enclosed in a fireproof cabinet. So, the finishing, I'm not doing any spray. I think, is that what you're asking me, whether it's hand-applied or sprayed?
Yeah, I just, I was wondering what to, these are alcohol-based shellacs and things.
Yep.
Is there, is there a booth, or is there...
There's not, there's not a booth. There's, there's special containers that, you know, for oil-soaked rags, or for containers with alcohol-based finishes that, you know, like the school I went to in North Bennett Street at Boston, I know obviously the zoning and stuff there is a little different, but they had an open area. It's, I believe the ventilation they had was just some fans in the ceiling when, you know, when you go in to finish, you turn the fans on. But they didn't have any extraction for the, for the smells, because really the smells aren't very noxious.
The assembly, the fabrication of furniture that you're doing now.
Mm-hmm.
Where are you conducting that?
I'm conducting it at the Button Factory on Isinkin Street in Portsmouth.
Mm-hmm.
It's funny you should say that, because there's actually condos out in front of where my shop is. I'm not sure, you know, how they relate to one another as far as what, you know, if the Button Factory, if my shop was grandfathered in before the condos went. But that is a big operation. My, my shop does a lot of architectural mill work, and, you know, we build kitchens, well, not we, but it's a shared cooperative shop, so there is people in my shop that do large projects, much larger than anything that I would ever do in my space.
And the finishing operations that you carry on there, is that also just an...
It's a separate, we, we do have a spray capabilities there. It's in a separate room with full ventilation and spray booth capabilities.
And you have dust collection there as well?
I do, yeah.
Is the dust collection hooked up to each machine?
It is. Yep.
Yeah, I've seen, I mean, I've seen architectural mill shops.
Sure.
I understand, I have an idea of how, how clean they're maintained.
Yep. And really, the, the shop that I'm in, you know, my uncle's been there for 25 years, so all the guys that are in the shop are kind of my pseudo-uncles, and, you know, I, I grew up kind of going to the shop and learning how to do woodworking there. The, how do I say this nicely? The, the machines are just, they're, they're old antique machines that are extremely loud. They work, but they're modernized, they're not modernized at all. There's no, the dust collection system, I mean, is, there's, it's pretty, it's pretty dusty in there and pretty loud. And they just, they deal with it because they've been doing it for so long that they, it's a nice shop, but it's not, it's, you know, going in with a blank slate, having worked in really high-end professional shops that are fully, you know, you know, equipped with incredible dust collection systems, and so I feel like, you know, I'll, I'll absolutely be able to fit the, the space with the, you know, the most modern techniques to collect dust and to, you know, keep everything really clean and organized.
Is there a tenant upstairs, Mr. Buchanan? Or, there is?
There is.
And does a tenant, is the tenant aware of, excuse me? Is the tenant aware of what Mr. Gallant is proposing to do?
No, I, I don't know. They're friends, but the tenants, he may have told, I haven't really discussed it.
I know the people that live upstairs, yeah.
He's friends with everyone.
Yeah.
Do they have a notice? I don't know.
They don't?
They're not? Okay.
I, I could speak to that issue. Like, my girlfriend lives upstairs. She couldn't be here at night, she was behind on her work. And she was going to be here to show her support of it, but she couldn't.
I'll come back to you for a second, in a second. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm monopolizing the discussion. Anybody else have any, these are just the questions that occurred to me.
So, basically, your finishing process is all hand-applied?
Yes.
Rubbed, and rags, and probably a fair amount of waxes and things like that, too?
Some, yeah, I use a, I use a fair amount of wax, yeah. That's the last, usually the last process that I do to, you know, it's all finished and everything, I put a beeswax mix that I've made over that.
Are you going to have any kind of a showroom or anything there?
Um, well, in the layout, in the front part of the, you know, there'll be a soundproof wall, and in the front of the, of the space, I'll have my benches and my tools, and where I do, you know, if I'm doing carving or on my hand planning, everything that I'm going to do is going to be in front. So, I haven't, I've been asked that question a lot, like, oh, you'll have space to, you know, have a, you know, showpiece, but I don't really plan on having any retail space where I have, you know, stuff for sale. I thought if, you know, if all goes well, and I open the shop, that I might do a, you know, like a opening where I have some pieces displayed and have it kind of open to the public to come and see the new space.
Basically, you're just going to have like a catalog where people come in?
Well, and a website.
Yep.
Yeah. And a portfolio.
Where do you anticipate the finishing being done? Is it in the, in the benchroom, or in the...
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this is, it's so hard. Once the whole space is all cleaned, and, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to be, you know, making the, the space adequate for what I want to do, you know, I'll have, this is kind of like, it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly where everything's going to go until I get in there and start moving things around and building walls.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, I would, I would envision it being in the back somewhere where, you know, there's windows and I can have...
In terms of noise, I'm, I'm going to guess that you don't keep these machines running. You turn them on when you need them.
Absolutely.
And then you turn them off when you're done with them.
Right.
Okay, what are, what are your hours of operation down in the Button Factory?
I'm usually there from 7:00 to 8:00 to 5:00 to 6:00. It varies, you know. Today I was in Rye helping my uncle install some crown molding, so it's, I, I think I proposed a 8:00 to 6:00, something like that.
That's what you're envisioning at this point?
For a machine, I mean, for a machine, stuff that I'm, you know, carving is so quiet, I know. If I, if I go in there at 8:00 to carve for a couple hours, I don't think that that would be...
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more concerned with the operation of the machines.
Right, absolutely.
I didn't see that you noted that in here, what you were anticipating doing.
9:00 PM until 8:00 PM will not be in use.
So, you...
The third page of his writing.
Are there any special provisions required for the disposal of the material you use for finishing, the rags that you use when you're done with them?
Um...
You keep them in a sealed container?
After, I believe, after a certain amount of time, once the oils have dried, that they're not, they can't combust. It's when they're wet that they, they, if they're balled up and they have room to, I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're wet and they're tight, then they can get rid, they can get hot. I don't know the science behind it, but...
Yeah, spontaneous.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
All right. But see, but you, as I understand it, you take provisions by keeping your rags and your finishing materials in...
Absolutely.
...fireproof containers to deal with that issue.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gallant?
Yeah, just have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Will there be any work done outside?
As far as...
As far as furniture?
Opening the doors and going out into the...
Correct.
No, no.
All right, no work done outside?
No.
Do you, you have any data on the machines, technological...
The decibels, right. I, I, I don't. I don't have any of the decibels comparable to, you know, retrofitting the heads. I don't have that information.
Okay.
I got all of that.
Oh, you looked it up?
Yeah, I got it all.
Oh, great. Go ahead, Bill.
Actually, maybe we could go down if that's, I think that's important, this material, so we have data.
Yeah, yeah, if you'd mind showing us what you have there.
Well, I could read everything I got, if you want. Or I can read, or I can read just, just the...
Cliff notes.
Okay.
I'm going to let you use your best judgment.
Okay, the applicant has stated to reduce the noise levels, he will be using the most advanced cutter heads. Helical spiral cutter heads on his machines thereby reducing the decibel, decibel, decibel level. Using these heads, the noise, the level of noise is from a low of 85 to a high of 96 in the workplace. This is a reduction from 16 to 27 decibels, from approximately 112. That noise came from using the old cutter heads. These figures were obtained online, popularwoodworking.com. The permissionable exposure limit levels by OSHA in hours are 16 at 85 decibels, 8 hours at 90 decibels, and 4 hours at 95 decibels. Exceeding those figures require the use of hearing protection. In my conversation with Alan Mitchell of Homestead Woodworking School, who has trained over 600 students in the fine art of woodworking, and many have become full-time artisans, it is professional experience for comparison that a router, I think a router is the more quieter piece, when it is operating makes no more noise than a vacuum cleaner when it is running. And I think that's all in who's hearing the noise.
Yeah.
Because some people, some people hear noise more than others.
It's true.
My wife will say, "Don't you hear me?" And my daughter says, "I think he needs hearing."
Richie, this is being recorded, you want to be very careful.
Yeah. But anyway, that is that.
Yeah.
On that part of it.
Well done.
Okay. And I don't envision more than one machine being on at a time, because he's one...
Well, obviously, he's on one man operation.
Yeah, no, it's, it's one at a time.
Sorry, Bill.
That's all right. Well, there, you said before that no ventilation is required, and you don't have any intent to install ventilation system that exhausts to the exterior of the building. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, yeah.
And the dust collection is also completely confined to the building and doesn't exhaust air to the outside?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with life safety, fire safety. That's all separate.
Right.
Not part of our discussion. That's all stuff he's got to deal with.
All we've got to do is figure out whether it's manufacturing or light manufacturing.
Correct.
Correct.
Is there anything further from Mr. Gallant at this time?
I have nothing further.
What I'm going to propose, Leslie, you have questions?
Yeah.
Is that, grab a seat, and we'll hear from some of the abutters if they care to comment.
Okay.
And then, depending on what they say, you'll have an opportunity to come back and say whatever you want to say to finish us off.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any abutters, any members of the public care to step forward and make a comment on the application? Sir, you, you mentioned something about your girlfriend earlier. If you could just tell us your name and, and address, and maybe her name? Come with the microphone. Come, come, come straight up to the microphone. Come straight up to the microphone, so the people at home can hear you. You're on television.
Oh, geez.
Should have tucked your shirt in.
Um, my name's Jack Losalven. I live at 24 Spring Street. And I am co-owner of the Big Bean Cafe in town, and my girlfriend, Ashley Havenor, lives above the proposed space. I don't know the address. You would know that better.
178 Main Street. The old firehouse.
Um, we're both certainly for this project. Jeremy's a friend of ours, and I also pointed out the space. I talked to Hugh years ago, and he was like, "What should we do with this space?" And, and I was like, "Well, can people use the parking out here?" And he said, "No, that's for the tenants." And I was like, "Well, it's kind of hard to have a business with this parking in front of it." And, you know, so I, I was thinking for a long time, and Jeremy wanted to open a fine furniture shop. He does great work, and, you know, it's been in the family for a long time, and I was like, "Well, if you're going to be selling pieces online, you don't need the parking. New Market fills that corner business spot that we've been waiting to have filled for so long." So, it just seemed like a good fit. And it being an old firehouse, like, it's a pretty solid structure. I don't think the noise is really going to be spilling out of there anyway. Not too bad, you know. Sirens used to come out of it, so...
Okay. Understood. Anything else?
I think that's it, yeah.
Thank you very much. Anybody else care to comment? Hearing no further comment, I guess we'll...
Do you want to mention for the record, we did receive a...
Oh, yeah, I will, I will mention from the, well, mention for the record, sorry. And it is in the record already, that we received a letter of support from a butter, Mr. Fred Howe. And we did receive this evening a nicely-bound packet of materials from the applicant, including some photographs of his work, a sketch of the property, and a letter in support of his application to supplement the materials that we had already received. So, here seeing no further comment from the public, close the public hearing, and, let me...
I would like to read you what I got.
Richie, please, please feel free. And what, depending on what it says, if the applicant cares to respond, I'll give them an opportunity to do so.
All right, well, I'm, I'm reading from all the literature we got from previously.
Very good.
Okay, and, and what I, what I looked up. By its own definition, it is my position that the applicant meets the criteria in opening up a small, custom, fine furniture-making shop located at 170 South, South Main Street, based on the following facts. That light manufacturing covers many activities, based on three broad groups, of which he has listed in the second group, that covers the finishing, furnishing sectors of cabinet, wood machining, furniture polishing, upholstery, bed and mattress making, floor covering and finishing, soft finishing blinds and awnings, musical instruments, tuning and repair, and glass, and glazing. Whereas manufacturing is the production of goods for use or sale, using labor and machines, tools, chemical and biological processing or formulation. It is most commonly applied to industrial production in which raw materials are transformed into finished goods on a large scale. Such finished goods may be used for manufacturing other more complex products such as aircraft, household appliances, automobiles, are sold to wholesalers, who in turn then sell to retailers, who then sell them to the end user, consumer. And in getting down to just what's in the state here, the current New Hampshire artist laureate is David Lamb. He's a Man's Master Furniture Maker of Canterbury, New Hampshire. There are 25 master furniture makers listed in the state of New Hampshire that show their finished products at a month-long exhibition at the Historical Society in Concord, along with one invited artist this year. His name is Matthew Vider, and I don't know if he's related to the Viders in New Market.
Good friend.
Huh?
This is a good friend.
Good friend, yeah.
Yeah, and three emerging artists that have been invited to display their talent this year. The exhibition will then be moved to the Courier Gallery in Manchester to be auctioned. And for the applicant, a quote from a New Hampshire master. "I count myself lucky to have a vocation that is challenging and rewarding, not only in terms of manual skills, but creative ability as well. In all my furniture-making and design, I tied to respect the words of one of my instructors at the Fine Woodworking Program at the College of the Redwoods. Be happy in your work." And if it's okay to make a motion, I'll make a motion. Or, no.
It is, but hang on just a second.
Okay.
Anybody have, you want to add anything to what Mr., responding anyway to anything Mr. Shelton was just saying?
I can make a motion, and we can second it and then discuss it.
I'm just checking with the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
I think he's, it looks like he's set.
Yep.
Do you mind if I take that and stick that in the file?
Yeah, I've got a copy for you.
We'll wait for your minutes.
Yeah. That'd be great, Richie. Go ahead and make your motion.
I will make a motion that the proposed use of a furniture-making business located at 178 Main Street, tax map U3, lot 152, M2 zone, is consistent with the use under section 1.111, light manufacturing.
Second.
I'll second that, yeah.
Beat you.
Leslie, go ahead there first. Okay, discussion of the motion. The only thing I have in mind is whether we want to have a limit on the hours of operation, operating the machinery after a certain time in the evening. That's the only question I have.
Is that something that falls within our purview at this time?
I think so.
Does that fall under the building, building inspectors?
No.
I think, I think you can make it a condition of the approval.
Approval.
What's, what's in the materials that we've received in writing is not being used from 9:00 PM until 8:00 AM.
If, yeah, if we're, if we're going to go there, I don't want to limit his, you know, if he's out there carving, if he wants to do that at 10:00 at night, I have no heartburn at, at all with that.
We're only talking about operation of machinery.
Talking about machinery.
Correct.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm, I'm putting it out there for discussion. If you guys think it's unnecessary, and that's fine, but I, I think, I think a reasonable limit on not operating machinery after a certain point. The applicant is proposing no machinery after 9:00 PM, and, between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And I wonder whether people think that's reasonable.
You might be more comfortable from 8:00, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
8:00 to 8:00?
8:00 to 8:00.
Or...
With no, with no machinery running.
Or equipment operating between 7:00, 7:00 AM. Limit the equipment operation between seven and seven.
You can do it either way.
Better, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, those are more consistent, normal business hours.
Dan, do you remember what the town ordinance is? It was a construction ordinance.
I have it, and I believe it is seventy-seven is to do with this. I can verify that.
Yeah.
Hang on for a minute, take your time. There it is, right here.
And what are you referring to?
This is ordinance ninety-nine oh-four, which is the town of New Market's noise ordinance. And it talks about a lot of different types of noise, but there is something here on operations, actually. It says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to disturb the public comfort within New Market by creating noise, by operating or causing the operation of equipment or machinery during certain timeframes." And there's different categories. For power tools, it talks about nine P.M. to seven A.M. For construction equipment, nine P.M. to seven A.M. Loading and unloading, actually, they're consistent, it's nine P.M. to seven A.M. And that's in our noise ordinance, which was passed in nineteen ninety-nine.
Probably the best case, nine P.M. to seven A.M. would be great.
But that would be consistent with, I mean, I...
It's consistent.
Are you willing to accept an amendment to your motion to have it be no operation of machinery between nine P.M. and...
Seven A.M.
Yes, that's fine with me, I'll amend that to them hours.
If you're not comfortable, it's...
No, I'm comfortable with it.
Lynn, is that, you seconded that motion, is that okay, as a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
So, the motion then, in sum, is to grant the application subject to no operation of machinery between nine P.M. and seven A.M., consistent with the ordinance that Dan just reviewed. That's the motion as it stands, okay?
Yep.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Any new or old business to come before the board?
Good luck, it's...
Good luck, Jeremy, I appreciate it.
Looking forward to seeing your work.
Very pleased to see a tenant in there, Mr. Buchanan. The perfect thing in this...
It is, it's a good...
Thank you, Mr. Galant, thank you, everybody.
It's much nicer to come here without having to commute all the way.
No.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, Jeremy, thank you.
I just coughed into my hands, I fist bumped.
Perfect thing in that building.
Thanks, thanks so much.
No, that was, that was, that was a school, that was the elementary school before that, I believe.
Chris, do we get a motion to adjourn?
And the reason I...
Hang on a second before we get too far down memory lane. Any new or old business to come before the board? Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.